All right, welcome everyone. This is a special board meeting on December 21st at 3:00 PM. I'd like to thank those who took the time out of their day to join in, in hearing this discussion. So if I'd like to lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay. I think we have everybody on trustees except for trustee Bertozzi. Hopefully she'll be able to join soon. Just to make a brief announcement, for those who may want to be on this call just to hear about the status of our, our DPW, the only comment that we're going to make tonight about that is the village has placed the supervisor of the Department of Public Works on paid administrative leave. The village is aware of the indictment and we will provide a full cooperation with the district attorney's office. That'll be the only discussion about that position. This special meeting is really about creating an organizational structure for the temporary, for temporarily filling in the role of building, planning, and zoning. We're gonna kind of table DPW because the DPW section, I currently run a weekly operations meeting. And what I'm trying to do is for the temporary time incorporate the DPW functions into that temporary meeting. And then hopefully those people, whether it's highway water, wastewater, will be working with their appropriate liaisons as well as part of that communication. So today, we want to talk about building, planning, and zoning. Okay? I believe everybody has or has been emailed the organizational chart that Lydia, trustee Lydia Slavy and I put together. A little bit of background about this. What Lydia and I have been doing in the past few days, past few week and a half or whatever, is we've been in contact with many municipalities. We've been in contact with people who have held these positions in other municipalities and people who are currently working in different aspects of this to kind of create a model for what we, what, what we think we need to do going forward temporarily. So in working with the other municipalities, what we're finding out is that, you know, there's small, medium, and large. You know, large where they're processing hundreds of permits a month and small where we're doing, you know, 20 to 30 permits a month. And we're kind of in that small zone, but it's very important for us. But what we found is a lot of organizations, a lot of municipalities are doing the same, have the same type of structure in place as what we're proposing for our temporary structure right now to go forward. And that structure really consists of what you have at the top of the department is a building inspector. And building inspectors have multiple levels, right? There's the field inspector, you know, then there's people who do the, the searching of records and that kind of stuff. And then there's also a person that really oversees, is a building inspector, but oversees the function of that office and make sure that reviews plans, make sure the plans are complete. They write updates to the planning board, updates to the zoning board as, as necessary. But therein, they will then in turn give direction to a working with the clerk, give direction to somebody who do field inspections and somebody who possibly if needed be, be the code enforcement officer. So this chart we laid out is kind of, for those who can't see it, and I apologize for that. It's a tree structure. And on top of that tree structure is what's called the building inspector. This would be a senior level building inspector, somebody that's irreputable, has lots of experience, can drive review plans and drive that description which I just talked about. As I said, they would oversee the operations of this department, assigned tasks, review plans, and act as also as a technical advisor. And then they would send the reports to the billing board, planning board, and zoning board of appeals or meetings as needed. And based on our conversations, we feel that this can be done with two to four hours a week. Having this person, all right, setting aside their time to do that. And it typically would be somebody that is already in the job of doing it. That has two reasons, two, it's advantageous for us to do that because this is a civil service job. And coming from the civil service side of the house, dealing with the county, we have a building inspector position open today. So we can automatically fill that position and we don't have to fill it from the list. They can be provisional or since this is temporary, the county is working with us. We can take somebody that's already appointed in that position in another municipality, if that happens to be, and ask them to fill in as well for that. So in parallel to that top level of the tree structure would be our liaison, which in this case is trustee Lydia Slavy. You know, who would work very closely with that person and give feedback to us on the village board on how well the office is running, making sure things are running smoothly and basically provide that go-between communication between the office and the village board. Now underneath that tree structure, there would be three positions. The first position we already have filled, and that is our clerk, which is Ryan Dowden. Right? Ryan already performs a function for us as the building, planning, and zoning clerk. He works for us part-time, currently 20 hours a week. We're anticipating, but don't know, that we may possibly have to extend the building, that clerk's position, that clerk's hours. And we've, we've been in discussion with Ryan to see if he's flexible on being able to do that. And then just so everybody knows, the answer is yes. So we're not trying to exhaust Ryan and we're not going to go full-time. The county says we can take it right up to 30 hours a week in his current position and assign that in three-month intervals from the county. So one of the things we're talking about with Ryan is if we need to extend his hours. And we've already got approval from the county to do that. And Ryan is amenable to have a standard hours in anticipation. We're maybe talking to keep it like it is for a trial, but have to maybe extend it from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM if we have to expand those hours more for the clerk.
Gary, is it 25 hours a week now?
He's 20 hours a week.
20, oh, good, okay.
20.
Okay, sorry.
So let me, that's okay, but let me go through the whole chart and then let's have a discussion about this, right? So then underneath, again, those three positions, starting on the left with the clerk, the middle position is called a municipal code inspector, right? Some people refer to that as a building inspector because building inspectors have multiple titles and over time, their codes and their definitions and civil service have changed. So the municipal code inspector is somebody that would be, somebody that does the field inspections for us. So if you're building a house, they go out and do the framing inspection, do the foundation inspection, et cetera. You know, based on the schedules that are put in place after the senior official building inspector has, has approved the plans and the permit has been issued. So this will be, you know, again, a part, we're looking at this to be a part-time position. And again, we don't know the full realm of what this is, but in talking to people, we've, the initial rule is that we feel that this position can be done for, and we're going to call it up to 10 hours a week. So it could be one, it could be 10, but we're anticipating that it could be up to 10 hours a week, depending on what the demand is during that week. Right now, we're in a low wall, I should say, and there's not many inspections going on. So it really would vary based on the seasonal input and the amount of permits that are coming through the office. But this will be a field, this, this person will be the field inspector, come back, create the reports, and keep the file and, and, and keep the clerk up to date on that's going on. And last position on the far, on the far right, as you're looking at the paper, is the code enforcement officer. Right? So this is what we also have been calling the zoning enforcement officer. In our case, the previous person had the zoning enforcement officer, but we can use the title called code enforcement officer. And this person also, this is the person then that if there is a violation, you know, the building inspector reviews the violation, the building inspector gives that to the code enforcement officer. The code enforcement officer is the person that goes out and issues the violation and then follows through and tracks what needs to be done. So this is the structure that we're trying to put in place. I just want to reiterate that this has been a result of a lot of discussions with both outside people. Lydia actually interviewed an organization that does this. Village of Red Hook had used them in the past. Poughkeepsie had used them in the past. You know, there are, so there are organizations that we could hire as consultants to come in or, and fill this position and run it for us. The big difference is the rate of pay. All right, the consultant that we did talk with, Lydia, correct me, I think it was $125 an hour, right?
Yeah, it was $125 an hour for all three positions. Yeah.
Right, right. To be able to do it. And they would, they would fill these positions with their people and charge us whatever the rate would be. But we, there also are people that are available outside that, you know, have part-time positions with other municipalities that are capable of filling these positions for us. Many of them have contacted us, but I said, we're not going to do anything in terms of selection of people or working with people until I had an opportunity to review this structure with you, the board. Because we are going to be spending money, right? We're going to be spending additional dollars to pay people on a part-time basis to fill these three additional positions and possibly extend the hours for the clerk in, out of our current budget that we need to have. So I wanted to make sure that everybody here was aware of that and that we could have that discussion on those dollars if so need be. All right. So I'm going to wrap this up. You know, we've talked to, we've talked to many people to give you some idea of the hourly rates for the code, municipal code inspector, you know, that middle to entry level position is $28 an hour. Okay? The building inspector would be two times that rate, up to two times that rate. And then the code enforcement officer is in the same realm of $20 to $28 an hour from what we received of what people are interested in, all right, to be able to fill those positions. Okay. So now I'd like to open it up to questions from the board. Or comments.
Who's the person who actually goes to the planning board meetings?
So you, good question, Rick.
Yeah.
Do you want to answer it, Lydia? I can.
Yeah, go, right, go ahead, Gary.
All right, I'll answer and then you add on. So in our process of discovery here, we've been in the position where the building inspector code enforcement officer attended the meetings, right? What we have found in talking to the senior level people, they only attend meetings if it's an absolute must. They normally write up a, what do you want, a report? And their reports have been very sufficient to handle building, planning board meetings, right? So they don't attend meetings, Rick. I think we were nominally. You know, our planning, our board was used to having somebody there, they could ask questions. But if you have somebody that's asking, providing the right information, I think that answers the planning board and the zoning board appeals information. And that's what the experienced people are telling us that they do. Good question. But if it was need be and there was, you know, a public hearing or something, then we'd have to make sure that those people were available.
Dude, are you projecting anything for the CEO per hour, hours per week?
Yeah, that's again, Brent, I have no clue. I'm going to be bluntly honest with you.
Yeah.
You know, you know, and how many violations?
15 or something like that, but I, I'm not sure either.
I don't think it's very, my, my gut feel is, is that it's not a very high volume of stuff, right? That, that goes out of there. But I don't, right now, looking at the records, we don't see a huge record trail of zoning violations that are going out. You know, we've, the ones that we've been dealing with in the past and a few are really like sidewalks, right? That have been tracking a lot, the 30, 60, 90-day notices on sidewalks and those issues, so.
Yeah, and they, they're also going to be seeking an opinion though, you know, as to the legality of stuff, so.
And that's where the building inspector holds that title. So the zoning enforcement officer, this, this senior level irreputable kind of person kind of encapsulates all of those functions into their knowledge base.
Okay, so that, so a little bit of the CEO stuff is going to be done out of the, underneath the building inspector.
Yeah.
Zoning interpretations as well as building, as well as the, the building board interpretations.
Yes, very good point. And that's a good point because that's what, Lydia, correct me, is that how you understand it as well in our conversation?
That is how I understand it. And, you know, the people that we've spoken to for that particular position, the more experienced senior level position would basically hold office hours at a, at a time when would be convenient for residents and, you know, be able to answer those questions, review applications with Ryan, you know, sort of the higher level stuff. Whereas the code enforcement officer and the municipal code inspector would very much just be the boots on the ground and then report, report into Ryan and the building inspector on what needs to be handled on a, you know, on a more detailed basis.
Okay.
My recollection is there are some annual inspections, like fire inspections and stuff that need to be done. Is that, that'll be the code enforcement officer who does that kind of stuff?
So now we, Rick, we already have a fire inspector.
Oh, right.
Okay, we, Ben Conley is our current fire inspector and we hire him on an inspection basis.
That's right.
And he's been approved for a while.
That's right.
And just so, just so you know, he has been pinch hitting for, for building inspection, you know, on boots on the ground building inspections. So he's also capable of doing that.
And we really have no idea how long this, this arrangement, we'll have to see how it works, but we just don't know how long it's going to last.
Yeah, no, that's a TBD.
Yeah.
Very much a TBD.
Is there some limit on if we borrow civil service people, is there some, is there some fuse on that? Like how long we can use them or, I'm not really sure how all that works.
Yeah, so and, and Martina can chime in here as well, but what we put on the bottom here is like, for instance, if we extend Ryan's hours, that's on a three-month basis.
Okay.
And if we, if we, what they told us is we can write what's called an RPC to create these positions. And, and they know what's going on here in our municipality. So once we want to fill a position, we create the RPC to the county, send it to civil service, we can then fill that position. So
For 90 days?
For probably, for some of those, probably more than 90 or 60 days, right? As in, as needed. Because we've done this, we've done by creating these RPC positions, we've done it before. Martina, do you have any other additional from your conversations with civil service?
Martina, you're on mute.
You're muted.
Sorry. Depending on what position you're looking to fill. So currently, I believe it's our building inspector position. Give me one moment.
Well, she's looking it up. The notes on the bottom say they're all, these are some, these, if you want to go for permanent positions, they have to be pulled from the list. But if you're going for provisional positions, you can pull from anybody. And all of these positions would be what they're calling provisional positions by civil service.
Right, so we already have an existing building inspector position noted with the civil service, which is actually vacant. The position was created and it kind of encompassed three positions in one for John. So as of right now, they said that it's vacant and we can fill that, we just need to submit an application. It would still be a provisional if that's what we wanted, or it could be a full-time for that specific position. For codes enforcement, that one would be a temporary provisional. We would have to, it, it's a competitive position, so we would have to either go off the list or hire somebody who would then be placed on the list to take the exam for that one. And we could do that temporary for six months or kind of forever, however long we need. Bumping Ryan up is a little bit different. I believe if we increase his hours, they said that he would have to be placed on this competitive list and he would have to take a test and his can only be done for three months. And then we'd have to reassess after that.
So ideally, this gives us time to have, you know, the other situation be determined one way or the other.
And I guess my, my comment is, is that if the board is agreeable to move forward with this, Lydia and I would then be the ones responsible for kind of reviewing the applications or people that we've already spoken to that have expressed interest. And then at our first meeting in January, or even sooner if we have to, come back to the board and say, here's, here's the people that we want to fill these positions. And get the board approval.
And just a, just a note, I'm, I'm a big fan of this new org chart, primarily because it doesn't have one person doing all of the roles. It, it creates a system of checks and balances. It creates a system where we can hire, you know, younger, cheaper people and then older, more experienced people to sort of bounce off of each other. There's an opportunity for mentoring. And there's also the opportunity to have someone who really, really knows what they're doing and who is well-respected in the community and by the state enforcement boards to be in charge of the office. So that's, 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 those are the main reasons why I'm a big fan of this new way of thinking about the, the building and zoning department. And both, I mean, to be clear also, both Ryan and I go to every single planning and zoning board meeting. And so if there's any questions that he or I can't answer, you know, one of us can bring it to the building inspector. But how it was described to Gary and I, which sounded really intelligent, was that the building inspector writes, you know, a response to an application with either a thumbs up, thumbs down recommendation, basically answering all potential questions that the planning or zoning board might have. And then they use that as well as their opportunity to, you know, interview the applicant and all the rest of it to make a decision. So
So it's like, it's like the gateway.
Yeah.
Part of the process.
Yeah, like a highly professional, very knowledgeable gateway, which I think is a good idea.
Yeah.
I like it.
I think it's a good idea. It's going to take, obviously take a while for us to get all the kinks out, but it seems like the right direction to move.
Yeah, we're going to have to get started on something, right?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I was late, everyone. I schedule over here with kids at home from school is intense. So my question is, maybe I just missed, because I missed the top of the meeting, is the idea to bring these people in on a temporary basis for like a certain number of months, right? But with the option to continue, if that's how things shake out, is that correct?
Yeah, Vanessa, because we currently don't know how long we need to do this.
Right, so are we going to start off with like a three-month period or something and then options to renew?
You know, it's, we could, we could turn them on today and turn them off tomorrow. It's not like, it's not like you're taking somebody and you're writing a contract and they're good for three months. You know, civil service for Ryan, like for instance, Ryan's hours, Ryan's hours on our, we're on, if we extend Ryan's hours to additional part-time hours, that's a three months because he's a 20-hour-a-month civil service employee. If we want to extend him to 30 hours a month, say, which is still part-time, we can do that, but it has to be reviewed on a three-month increment for that. The others are provisional, what they call provisional positions. We can appoint people to those positions and keep them in those positions for as long as we deem necessary.
Okay, I guess my question is more like in the, if we're going to go advertise these positions, these provisional positions, are we giving people a timeframe? Are we just saying this is just sort of ad hoc, ongoing?
They, the ones that we've spoken to that have reached out to us already understand that they know it's ad hoc. Most of them do this for other municipalities. They, you know, they sublet themselves, so.
There seems to be a great deal of moonlighting all over the place.
So this is, what you're seeing, what you're seeing in this is a common practice that's at the top of the meeting I talked about is what we discovered in talking to a lot of other municipalities and both small and large, that this is a structure that is being, that they use.
Okay, great.
Oftentimes, what seems to be tumbling out, just in case you don't know, is, you know, full-time employees in cities or larger towns then moonlight themselves to the smaller communities. Or, you know, 30-hour-a-week, 35-hour-a-week people at the larger communities, moonlight themselves to smaller communities. Or there's one person who's just doing five or six smaller communities and it just all sort of works. Because, you know, villages the size of ours don't have full-time work for this kind of expertise. And so people pulled, cobble together, you know, full-time employment that way. And then most of the expertise comes from the people who have worked in the larger cities or larger towns for, you know, yeah, we had, we were talking to people who've worked in Poughkeepsie and La Grange and all the rest of it for 20, 30 years. You know, so a lot of experience.
Okay. And so Vanessa, what we had before was we had encapsulated all this into one person. So now what we're doing is we're bringing it up into multiple people to be able to, you know, it really provides a senior level person and some other levels to work collaboratively together. And a little bit of a checks and balance on each one of them so that it goes, you know, goes smoothly.
Great. And I, I mean, also the lawyer in me is very excited about if there's more people doing this than there's more email traffic and therefore more written communication about what is actually going on and it's not all just in one person's head.
Yeah.
So that's delighted with that particular idea.
Yeah, so I'm surprised that nobody brought up the question space, right? Because we really, we do, we do not have space for additional people. I want to be very, you know, so most of these people will, you know, will probably not, unless need be, be at village hall on a regular basis, right? The building inspector, or what we call the municipal code inspector, may never, won't have an office here. They'll come in, they'll get their assignments, you know, and they'll be able to go out and do the work and bring it back in. The same way with code enforcement officer. No need for office space in this model, right? Get their assignments from, you know, the building, the senior building inspector working and get their data from clerk and go off and do their thing and no need for an office. So I was also very concerned about that aspect of this job because we cannot expand. We just have, we don't have the room to expand, right? So that's how we were looking at space-wise. I'm expecting our senior level building inspector type will have office hours and they, they will be here at some point. And so the space we will be have will be reserved for them.
Everybody else saw file, file cabinet space.
Yeah. But that's where a clerk like Ryan, who's knowledgeable and knows everything that we have, is valuable to have. Because he can manage that, he can manage that.
Did you guys come up with, given your estimated hours a week, did you come up with what this is going to cost for, per week or per month? Do you have any sense for what it's going to, what it's going to do?
So we did, I didn't put the math together, but again, you know, code enforcement officers, municipal code inspectors, they're like $28 an hour. And so it's, given that the municipal code inspector was zero to 10 and the code enforcement officer was very variable, I didn't know how to put a number to it.
Okay.
Right? We know Ryan's hours, we know what he has, we know what he's doing already. And the senior level building inspector, again, we're going to have to establish a rate for that based on the person that we pick. And the senior level building inspector, again, we're gonna have to establish a rate for that based on the person that we pick.
But this, this being said, I mean, no, no matter what, it's gonna be more because the current person is on paid administratively because of the civil service laws, so, you know, one way or the other, we're gonna have to increase the budget.
Right. And I said they also get expenses, right? Mileage, all that, other, all those other good, good things.
Yeah, but I don't think that's gonna be big, Rick, that's gonna be, that's gonna be small potatoes, you know, in the grand scheme of things. We're not paying them to drive to Poughkeepsie or La Grange, we're paying them for whatever, you know, if they use their own vehicle here. But then, and if you, if you remember, one of our liaisons allowed our building inspector to give the truck to the highway department, so we really don't have a vehicle for this position.
Rick, was that you?
They needed it.
It also, not that this is a reason not to go forward with this plan, but it does strike me that there'll be additional, you know, additional bookkeeping and paperwork for, probably for Karen and Christie and Martina to manage the comings and goings and the payments and the tracking of hours and expenses.
Yeah, our, our, Vanessa, that's a good question, because our thinking is, is that these will not be contractors for hire. Where our thinking is that these, these people will actually be put on payroll, kind of like our independent contractors are for highway today. So they will submit their hours, they will clock in, clock out, right? If they're here doing time or clocking their time, and we will pay them through the payroll process. And that's good for them, because a lot of these are already civil service employees and anything that we do as municipality, it can, it can contribute to their retirement plan as well, you know, so forth. So our thinking is that they would become employ, village employees, kind of, you know, and be paid through our payroll process.
And we, we have a system for tracking hours?
Yep, we have, we have a time clock system.
Okay.
And both Karen and Martina and Chrissy, I think Chrissy, but I know Karen and Martina are very well versed in our time clock. And making it work.
Yeah, it's a punch in out system where you have to actually use your fingerprint.
Okay, so they would have to come in.
Yeah, but they don't have an office here. They'll come in, get their paperwork, come back, drop off their paperwork, punch in, punch out.
Okay, so they couldn't operate just fully remotely?
Probably, no, they're gonna have to come and get picked, this is driven a lot by paperwork coming out of the clerk's office.
Gotcha.
And the advantage of us being such a small geographic area is, you know, it's pretty easy for them to come in and check in with the clerk before they go out and do their work.
Okay, so what do we, do we need a resolution to do this, or what do we need to move forward?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would like to have a, a board vote of, you know, to on the, on this, right? Because we are spending money, and that's why I wanted to bring it to the board.
What do you expect of like, is it, are we talking like hundreds of thousands of dollars, or?
So, so I just did some quick back of the envelope math, and no one's allowed to quote me on this, no one's allowed to hold me to these numbers, no one's allowed to do anything related to these numbers other than just take them as the back of the envelope math that they are. But on a very slow week, it looks like it would cost about $176 on a very slow week, and that's just the salary, it's not the, you know, the rest of it. And then on a very heavy week, it would be about $800. So this is not hundreds of thousands of dollars, this is probably, you know, a few tens of thousand over the course of the year. Not even a few, maybe even a couple.
So we think it is a cost effective approach.
Yep, and honestly, if, if, depending on how everything happens, this might end up being a more cost effective approach in the way that we have done it in the past.
Well, the way it was years and years ago, it was maybe a little over 30 grand a year for the building inspector and the CEO, all that stuff. And then we had the clerk, so it seems like, kind of like that in a way.
And Karen, Karen could probably give us the breakdown of the numbers of, because each position right now in our, if you remember our, our financial plan, our expense plan, each position is broken down into the building, you know, for instance, the current person got paid so much for being a building inspector, so much for being his only enforcement officer, and so much for being DPW, right? It wasn't, and then that, that rolled up to one level.
So we kind of. Formula that only Karen knows, I think.
You should know it too, but.
Actually, that's not, I, it is in the trustee's packet for the budget every year under the salary breakdown, so.
I know, I just keep forgetting everyone.
Definitely. I would not keep that all to myself. No, it does, I, actually, as you were speaking, I just pulled it up and, and it does break down like the, the building inspector, 20% building, 15% planning and 15% zoning. Of course, in the, the situation we're in now, the building inspector is 50% of his, his, of the job of the current
Got it.
Plan, so.
Yeah.
So if we, if we don't, so sorry, so if we don't replace the, you know, the superintendent of public works, then that's a cross setting over there.
For water and sewer and highway, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, okay. Good to know.
I mean, alright, if, if the board doesn't mind, there are a few people still left on the, in the public, and so if you don't mind, I'm gonna open this up to public comment to see if anybody has any comments, or maybe there's somebody has a better suggestion. So if you, anybody listening has a comment, please raise your hand and Martina will let you in, let you speak. Okay.
All right. Christopher, your timer, go ahead.
Oh, you got a hand, sorry. Hi, Chris. Christopher, you're muted.
No, I'm, okay.
Yeah, now I can hear you.
So the couple of years I spent on the zoning planning board, it was often useful to have the building inspector with whatever hat he was wearing at the time, present at the meetings. And I'm sure it's often true with the planning board, you know, when complicated issues with certain back histories come up, it's good to have someone who, you know, really knows the scene and the codes at hand. And as of now, I'd say Ryan's knowledge of codes is, is not that reliable. But it'll grow in time. But meanwhile, I think we should not think you can really cut out all evening hours somewhere in these roles.
Yeah, Christopher, we're not precluding that at all, but from, from the experience that we, from the knowledge that we've gained and that the city senior level people write reports. And their reports are very involved and very precise and very well described for the planning board or the zoning board of appeals. And after, if, if that report is not sufficient, then they, yes, they would be available to have to attend a meeting. But the updates that we're getting is that if, if the report is good, the boards can handle it.
Okay, we haven't been getting those reports in the past.
That's right, this is a different structure.
Okay.
I agree, but I agree with you, so we're gonna have to, you know, work with the planning boards and work with the zoning boards to make sure that this all works well with them in, in, in the situations as well.
I think also what it'll end up doing is it will require the members of the planning board and the zoning boards to become even more knowledgeable about code requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So it's going to encourage increased professionalization of those boards as well.
Chauncey, I saw you raised your hand.
I did, just to thank you all for all this work, it really feels like you're getting it under control and appreciated very much.
Thanks, Chauncey.
Thank you.
All right, if nobody has any other questions, I would really like a vote to, because we are, since we're spending money, so I'm gonna go through the list. I'm gonna start with trustee Rick Lewitt.
What, what's, what's the motion?
You're right, the motion is to, alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve the building and planning zone department infrastructure that we, that we defined today.
The organizational chart?
Organizational structure.
Okay.
Second, you guys are gonna fill it, pursue filling it, that you and Lydia are gonna.
Yes, Lydia and I will pursue filling it and then come back and report to you.
Okay.
Second, or unless Rick got it.
That's right. Brent?
Aye.
Vanessa?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Alright.
I didn't vote aye.
I thought you already said aye, Rick. Okay. Alright.
Right.
That's it for, for this meeting, that's.
Okay, great, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to go into an executive session before we conclude the meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so for those on the call, I'm gonna wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, because we're gonna go into executive session and we're going to remove you from the list of attending this meeting.
Thank you.